Thank you everybody for your patience. Item six on the agenda is town council meetings. To approve the minutes of the town council meeting held on the fifth of October twenty twenty three. And as detailed in the minute books number one. Can we have a proposal to pass the minutes for the last council meeting or is anybody, any questions? Objections or anything about that towards it? I wasn't here, so I can't propose that. No, the fifth of October. Right, okay, right, proposal Sean, second. Second, all in favour of passing them?
Can I just interject here, yes, Kevin asking the me for certain items on the agenda being recorded. Can I ask for all items from now to be recorded, please?
Yes. So that's a request from council Middleton to have all items on the agenda. Recorded, all recorded. Item seven accounts for payment, confirm the payment of accounts for August twenty twenty three. Remember proposal obtained those? No proposal? Or proposal to be paid? Second. All in favour of paying those accounts? Keep your hands up please so that the deputy clerk can write down your names or initials.
I'm abstaining.
Anybody against? Abstentions? Item eight income, to review the council's income for August twenty twenty three. All councils have been sent this either by paperwork or by email, presumably everybody's reviewed them. Kind of a proposal? For the, I think. The second. I'll second them. All for paying them? Anybody against? Any abstentions? No, thank you. Item nine is grants, midterm grants. A little bit of that that's been written down here, at the midpoint of the financial year. We've spent just under fifty percent of the annual budget, which comes to seven thousand two hundred pounds of grants. We've got the Christmas season coming up. So we'll be expecting some grants to be coming in, potentially approved or denied. Last year they total twelve hundred pounds. So if we go on that kind of figure, then it's going to be just over the fifty percent. Which will leave us forty four percent remaining for the grant budget for the rest of the year up until April. We've been approached by Kingsley and Fitzwilliam Food Bank and also Hemsers Food Bank, Food Pantry, sorry, for a recurring annual support. The two representatives, Helen and, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of. Karen, Sharon, sorry, my apologies, if Sharon's here. No, my apologies, that met with the deputy clerk, the interim clerk. And they had a meeting. Our proposal is for to ring fence five thousand pounds per year. That's two and a half thousand pounds for each of them. And they'll be allowed over the year to draw down on that money when they think they need it. They do rely on donations. There's not an awful lot of big organisations about here, I know we've got Tesco's and things like that. I've been to collect bread from Woburns on an occasion, so they rely on donations. So sometimes they've got to go to supermarkets to buy more food. So it's a question of whether we can help them out. They do help, they do support about four hundred people. I don't know if that's, every month, sorry, every month they do support about four hundred people. Needy families, and I think this would be worthwhile considering and granting it. So.
Obviously Helen's, she's in touch with us, speaking for herself, although I do speak partly for her as well. We're in a place in which we don't see any donation at all. We don't see any donations at all.
I'll stand corrected on that, I do apologise.
Yeah, we. So we're solidly relying on the grants.
Right, okay.
At this time last year, we got a lovely donation, a Christmas, Christmas Day toys. We're not getting any of that this year. We still like to give things for Christmas, so we would like a grant for, to get us over the Christmas period. So that we can supply people with the food that they need, because I do market shop every week.
Right.
Because we don't, we don't get any food donations at all. When I said I, I'm talking about the food back, it's all of us.
Yeah, as a group.
Yeah, so every parcel that we give out, we have to go and buy from the supermarket. So and obviously, as you know, funds don't last that long, especially with the cost of living crisis at the minute. We're getting more people through the door and we're spending more on parcels that we can be now. So that's where we are at the minute, we've got things coming up, we need to ensure, we've got to have insurance. If we do start one day again, which I'm not saying we will, but we did last year, that was really well received. If we start that again, we've got to have insurance to cover us for that, so we've got that to pay. As we have a proper working mobile phone now, that's out. Not work, so you've got to find a phone contract. You've got other things that you don't think of, like, we've got to have a Microsoft Office to keep us things up to date. You know, on computer, it's all things other than food as well that we can't.
So are you proposing that you're probably putting in for another grant on top of that?
No.
Two thousand five hundred?
No, what we were hoping was that we would get a grant this side of Christmas, for whatever, whatever anybody, whatever they can afford. It will then accommodate the people that we've got with. We don't get enough to give them a gift, then we don't get a gift. If they've got enough to give them a Christmas turkey, they don't get a turkey, they get a turkey roll and whatever. Do you know what I mean? So it's things like that. If we can get something this side of Christmas to help us get through the Christmas period. And then if next year from April, if that starts from April, if that, we're rolling two thousand five hundred. I think this ring fencing and drawing down from like a budget, it's just a bit confused in terms of what we're going to do right now. As opposed to say like having one minute.
The way, the way I see it regarding this, if, if the council members pass this this evening. Probably a proportion of that will be available straight away.
Yes.
From this year, from the rest of this financial year.
Yeah.
And then from April, I believe that it will start from the five thousand again. So you will be able to draw down some.
Yeah. So Sean. The way I understand what we're saying is, is start from April, you're going to draw down.
You'll get the full five thousand.
Between now and April, whatever priority.
Are we working like thirty percent of what's left of thirty percent of the yearly budget? Or is it just, just to set an out?
From April, it's thirty percent.
From April, it's thirty percent.
Yeah, it's about thirty three percent, a third, yeah.
So what are we doing? So is it just for a normal grant for now? Or is the budget available going to small of the, like the more?
Yeah, if we pass it this evening, let me, the way I see it, if the grant is passed this evening. Then you won't be able to draw down on that for Christmas.
That's great.
Okay.
Well, just to describe the situation whereby this is the hardest time of the year for folk. And it's also the most expensive time for yourselves, so I think what we would see from yourselves and from the other food pantry would be an indication of what you needed.
Yeah.
And then you come and we, you know, we could agree it up with some councillors and then sign the cheque or do a bank transfer, whatever is easiest for yourselves and most efficient. And then look at it. After Christmas, if there's any hardship that you feel that needs then to be addressed and such.
So using my really bad maths, that works out about, it would, if a twenty two and a half grand each, each like, it'd be two hundred and eight pounds of pennies each month. So am I right in thinking they would have October, November, December, January, February and March, almost five or six months to draw down now if they wish.
Yeah, if you. Is that clear, is that? In terms of expectancy and heavy demand, then may I say could we have slightly more than the profile normally, you know? But, but Sean has described this as like a smooth profile, you may, you may want a more lovely, you know, bigger some.
Which, like I said, we've got the bills to, have got to go out, they've got to come out now, we've got to get some funding for that. Whether it be from yourselves or from someone else, we've got to get the grant for that. And then obviously we've got the expense of Christmas and then hopefully we're on an even keel again. So we won't dip into the money unless we absolutely do. Oh, you think it's passed, is it going to be right? Why are we going to have that?
If it's passed, it'll be, it'll be in the minute books and everything.
Illegal, and I believe in a certain way, then it has to be voted by the council to stop paying it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we decide it in three years.
You can't have it.
Get it, if they're going back to council and we have to bear.
Yeah. As Sean's described it, it's two hundred and odd quid per month. You don't need to get that two hundred odd quid per month, you can get a thousand pound one month. Five hundred pounds a little bit longer further on, whatever, whatever bills you need. All you, all you would need to do correctly, if I'm wrong, mate, is send a letter in and say you need this amount of money out of that. And then you'll get it sent.
When we had the meeting, you, you're very careful and kindling for everything and somebody with the other.
We do, we have spreadsheets for everything, if anybody asks us, leaving account for every penny that we spend.
Yeah, though it would be a simple case, you come along and say, this is the period, this is what we need and then.
Like I said, the main, the main thing is we've got Christmas, we've got people asking us what we're going to be doing. And we start saying, we don't know, because we haven't got the money for twenty twenty at the minute.
I hate for you to get into a situation where you've got to turn around and say, no, you can't have it.
Well, that's, that's the point, but we're at it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and grants, we can get grants from elsewhere, but they can take on us and months and months to do that. There are some correctability to what.
Talking about, I would have entered massive about a grand between now and April.
Yeah.
To do what you wish with.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in, in theory, you could draw down that one thousand pounds straight away, if that's what it is.
Yeah. So move it on, can I just, it's obvious, the football, they're getting out from home banks. Because the cost of living is mainly based on packages, not for donations. So to move things on, I propose that we award this.
Yeah. Yeah, so moving on, are we going to propose this? Kevin's just proposed it, Sean's seconded it. Anybody voting for it, going to vote yes?
Yeah.
So unanimous?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item ten on the agenda is the replacement of the water park boiler, which is in dire needs. To receive, going to receive reports on tenders for replacement of heating system at the water park. Nick, do you want to?
Just very quickly, we have, we have one tender within the period, although two from state exam and look in detail at the, at the sign. So we think that we need to go again and a colleague, Sean, has suggested we make use of contract finder. We, we open the process up again, so that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, can I just say anything, I mean?
Yes.
I know it might be something, but I like to know why they call it a disrepair. Everything seems to be urgent, same as the thing in there, we need it urgently. It's probably actually not true, how, how we named it that much?
I'm not, I'm not.
Can I, can I come in?
Yeah.
So on the last, the previous council, when you get, I believe you, I wasn't, I wasn't a money investor, I don't disagree with you. We got a quote for over a hundred thousand pounds for repair of that unit. So the council said, no, we're not paying a hundred and odd grand, it's ridiculous. And the council was instructed to go out, just basically our last meeting, they instructed to go out to look for other alternatives, radiators, that sort of thing. And due to circumstances, that's fallen through the cracks, I believe, and taken a bit longer than it should have done.
Okay, now who's expected, that doesn't answer my question, my question is.
I did, I did answer your question.
No, it's not to do with our councillors, we can't go down there and monitor what state boilers they've done with.
I mean, regarding.
General manager down there, aren't they monitoring things? Because it says to us everything is emergency, we need this, we need that.
Regarding this particular boiler, it was brought up to the previous council several times and it got again.
Can, can you remember, can you remember Sean, how old the boiler is?
From when it was built.
The twelve, fourteen years. The original boiler.
Whenever the power was built, it's the original heat and cooling system itself, so that's over twenty odd years, I believe.
Can I just say, there is no meeting that I attended that it was the Lakeside Boiler. It was the boiler here. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't meditated as the Lakeside Boiler, it was the boiler.
I'll have to tell that, but I can remember discussing the Lakeside.
It was, it was here.
Here, here has been discussed as well, the Lakeside one was, I don't know when, Catherine.
It's a bit like when you said the dishwasher had been up for discussion and had been repaired and repaired and repaired. It hadn't, it hadn't been repaired. So the information that you were given, saying that the dishwasher had been repaired, repaired, repaired. It had had one repair and Andrew wrote and confirmed that. So I agree with councillor Conway that from my recollection, and I've been coming to meetings now, I've only missed two. For the last two and a half years, I'm not aware that the Lakeside Boiler has been discussed this year as. But the only thing down at the Lakeside that was raised was the lift. Because as far as I'm aware, that when you did all the renovation on the Lakeside. The boiler was actually included in some of those costs. I will look.
Back and confirm it, it was an explosion, but it was discussed because it was like one hundred and twenty five, one hundred and twenty thousand pounds. And we all just went.
Well, that's obviously why if it were discussed in a explosion, I wouldn't know that.
It was discussed, I can remember it at the close.
Does that make any question, Catherine?
Well, that, you're right, that should be regarding minutes exactly where it is from. I'll go back and try and look, it is.
So proposal for that to go back out to tender.
What was that?
Seconded, me. All in favour? Against? Abstention? Right, so that's going to go back out to, to tender. Right, bonfire night. We're having one. I believe it's the correct date, Sunday the fifth. This is just to update the councillors and the public as to how advanced we are in the organisation of it. Wakefield Metropolitan District Council Events Report has been submitted. Does that get accepted, denied or?
I'm not sure. Typically, they usually come back and say, you know, you need to do a bit more on this issue or, you know. Quickly something, you know, it's never a hundred percent perfect, but he's yet to have come back.
They haven't come back yet. The police have been contractually engaged, so a bit of police presence down there. Security and marshals have been booked. First aiders have been booked. There's going to be entertainment that night, it's a Lady Gaga, Caroline Minogue tribute singer. I'm not sure what time that's going to be starting, but obviously it'll be after the fireworks. Portaloos have been ordered, yet to be delivered obviously. The fireworks have been booked. Bonfire wood has been sourced and being collected. Food and drink offers have been organised and food's been ordered. Excuse me, to be delivered. Fun fair people have been contacted. Confirmation of the rights and fees, we should get next week, we haven't got those yet. And how many rights is going to be there, any idea? No?
I guess it's a mixture of adults and childrens and take a doctor, you know.
And posters have been completed and they're going to be promoted on Hemsford Town Council and various places. Probably you'll see them on the council websites, potentially. Have they already, has the town council's website been updated with those? Not yet?
Not yet, tomorrow morning.
Be tomorrow morning, that'll be updated. Any questions from the councillors, any questions from the councillors?
Yeah, I know I've already thought of one, but I think turning back to this working room, we need more water back. I'm concerned again with external or rather non-council people who have benefited that has been from this, I hear the car park, the external came to them. Now, my point is, if we had this working room for proper running, because we were stopped at, yeah, what's wrong with that? Probably reducing price on the lines, you know, to deter people which are other places. And also the car park that I've been, that's somebody mentioned to me. And I've already told him now, the owner of that car park, he's telling me very clearly, he didn't took the keys off, he told, you know, we're going to have to move out.
Which car park?
The one I put in the dog track, I think he said.
Dog track.
I talked to them and they confirmed that it will be for free use and they won't give us, to us unless it is for free. So users, people who come to it will, will get entrance for free.
That, that will be advertised, I believe, on the, on the poster, where you can park for free. If there are any other car parks that are opened up anywhere, that charge or anything like that, it's up to the individual public if they want to pay for it. But there is a free car park, which I think it used to be, Bray Brothers, for some reason, they no longer supply it. So Kingsley Dog Track, I'm supplying a free car park. I know there's going to be a little bit of a walk down there, but that's the closest we can get. Any questions? No? Okay. Item, item twelve has been taken off the agenda, agenda, that's the Breakfast Club at Fitzwilliam Centre. And they're going to relook at it. Yes?
Can you just say how much money has been spent to do this breakfast, breakfast club?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
How much money has been spent, aren't you?
Yes, I believe some money has been spent, but if it's regarding food, equipment, things like that. They will be able to be utilised elsewhere. Okay, so it's not a question of money having been wasted, because we wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
And if we did, I'll come back to you and tell you that so and so's been wasted.
Common knowledge of our schools and breakfast clubs.
Please.
This is why we need to have things passed on agendas before we start anything's on it.
It's common knowledge.
Luckily, we've been able to re-move some of that stuff out, I know, I don't even know what I'm about, because I've been talked about, but luckily these hours, I've been able to reuse some of it, if not, we'd have lost hundreds of thousands getting here. So things need to start coming to council before they're being agreed. And you can do all your work, you can look into things, I mean, that meeting, I thought we're very productive, it'd be a list on.
Was that one up at Fitzwilliam on Saturday?
A lot of discussions amongst the groups and that sort of thing, but.
I don't think Breakfast Club would have, it wouldn't have started basically because.
What does that mean, it will pass?
Just don't, let me have my say. All the schools get seventy five percent off the government until July, right?
Where are you going?
Yeah, they don't. They don't, Catherine, they get seventy five percent for twenty five.
You've known that.
Well, my, my.
They've got that by.
Very hard to do, it's choice.
Tina, Tina, this girl wants to have a word. I'll, I'll let you in a second, thank you. Did you want to say something on this?
What?
Did you want to say something on this?
I'm just following on what we were saying, it's steady lot before it started, because it, it's happened before and apparently it were really good this Breakfast Club and me personally, my grandson goes to Fitzwilliam Nursery and it.
Who did Breakfast Club before?
Oh, it's Kingsley, apparently.
Yeah, this is one up at Fitzwilliam Centre that we're talking about.
And Miss just didn't know about it, so it was a surprise as well.
That's where you're on. I've put messages, you're spreading false rumors again.
Can we, can we have some, can we have some order, can we have some order, please?
You're talking to her.
Can we, can we have some?
Excuse me?
Can we have some order, please? Kevin, I'm going to let Kevin come back and say, because I stopped him whilst the young lady was having a word, Kevin?
Yes, I got introduced to Fitzwilliam School last week, that's where you're on, and she said, oh, I think that's a brilliant idea, I'll back it. And let, let me finish.
Let, let him, let him finish, please, Gary.
On Tuesday, she said, I changed my mind, Kevin, because you're going to offer free meals and we're charging, so you're going to come with us.
Twenty five percent.
Look, they're charging, and the reason ourselves is because we're hitting the same people.
You know what a Breakfast Club is?
You know what it is?
You drop your kids off, I think.
People won't, they'll do that, and then they're going to class. Yeah, they may want round fifty.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to move, I'm going to move progress here, please. We've got another member of the public, Tina, wants to have a word on this.
You call them real life, you call them, this was a lie.
Can we, can we have some order, please?
Seven weeks only, you're making.
Can we, Kevin, please.
Can I just say, my, my grandson goes to Carlton School and they pay three pound a day for Breakfast Club.
No, but we're not on about that, it's after the doors are shut, right?
Yeah, after the doors are shut, the man gets a bag of.
After the doors are shut, schools now, the government now pays schools to feed children during school time. So once the doors are shut, they're all entitled to a bag of toast or a bowl of cereal, with all lessons, yes.
Carlton School does not offer that. They offer the Breakfast Club, the school have no choice.
Okay, right, can we have, can we, can we have some, can we have some order, can we have some order, please? Point of order here. Can, we have a point, point of order.
They've got a point of order, council should have a telepublic to shut up.
Yeah. That's what you've just said to me.
Tell me to shut up.
No.
And you accused Mary, no?
You actually prompted him and he told you to shut.
Right, hold on. We are going to move on. We're, we're going to, we're going to beg, we're going to beg to differ on this subject. It is going to be looked at again in the future, whether it goes ahead, I'm not sure, whether it doesn't go ahead, I'm not sure. But we will come back to it, okay? Right, moving on to item thirteen. The, see, this is regarding some vandalism that went off up at West End Community Garden. I don't know if anybody's seen on Facebook, but a lot of the benches up there have been destroyed by wanton vandalism. And there's a proposal coming potentially to put some CCTV cameras up there to monitor it. It's not going to stop it, I'm sad to say, but what it will do is we'll be able to picture the perpetrators and they could be prosecuted for this. But it's a question of where we can put the cameras. Wakefield Council have been approached and I believe they've got, the enforcement officers got back to us regarding that.
No, they, they're yet to get back.
They're yet, sorry, they're yet to get back to us, but another proposal is that we may be able to put a camera up inside Sandy Gate Football Facility. It's, in my opinion, that. It's, in my opinion, that might be the better option, because it is our land, um and we wouldn't need to get planning permission, I don't believe. To potentially put a post up, um there may be some legit, I don't know all the the legal implications regarding that, but um. It's regarding potentially putting putting them up there.
Can I just, I mean.
Yeah, it's councillor Middleton that proposed this kind of thing.
Was a public goal.
Public, right, yeah.
If anybody. Um, the way I took you on the post was smart, I didn't have a crowd funding page. I took that as though wanting uh possibly looking for solar panels or CCTV, but what the clerk, deputy clerk have done is look for the proper. Proper CCTV, hard wire, all that sort of stuff, and then obviously you see a cost, so most of all this information, they've done a lot of good work on it. Most of all, information that will will let everybody know, basically people, the options of, do we go solar or do we go for like?
Battery operated.
Yeah. I don't know, I'll play it on. That's probably our level.
But we'll come back on that subject, okay? All councillors happy with that?
Yeah, I'm like, is there a base, I know, is there a rug prize?
No, no, we haven't got any.
We're asking for CCTV, like you said, we won't stop them, we've got CCTV water park and it didn't stop them. And you're catching the perpetrators, and apparently you still aren't knowledge.
Okay.
So, guys, come in, so the proposal, actual thought proposal was, the community would pay for themselves, they just wanted to.
Retify it.
Yeah. We don't count.
That, yeah, sorry, I forgot about that. Um I did notice on Facebook that it's probably going to be a fundraising, a public fundraising. Yeah, and potentially the council putting something towards that.
So what, so I wasn't allowed to see CCTV then?
If there's any vandalism, the police will be allowed to see the CCTV so that they can identify them.
You know, we'll be, we'll be maintaining them, that's what we need to work out.
That's what we need to work, yeah, yeah.
As well as CCTV, could turn up investing some metal benches. I agree, um, yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to let councillor Middleton lives up that way, uh he's, and also the key is why they're up that way a lot more than I am. So I'll let him lead on this.
Vicky does a lot more than I do, um, fully reasonable, yeah.
I do quite a bit at Garm, you know, when I've got time, um just try and make it a bit better. Um earlier on in spring, I found some black cabbage on the ones, and basically my idea then for for others is. For people, you know, to eat something, cabbage and onions, sprouts, whatever, to go and take it, the strawberries up there. I've got two sacks of daffodils to plant up there just for the sprints, make it look nice, anybody who wants to work, they're quite welcome to come and do it. But yeah, I agree, metal benches, because it's a nice area to sit up there, you know, people stop with the dogs, you know, sit down for a while, kiddies.
I've been doing a consensus of the public was, let's try and get some CCTV, then make it look nicer.
Yeah.
So if we can put a little bench, they'll look like we're angle grinders or whatever, well, make it look nicer first.
It can turn and walk CCTV.
Of course, yeah.
There, in the long run, the metal benches would be better turned up.
And unless.
It's something on a plaque, yeah.
Maintain, yeah.
Unless unless some of the perpetrators are actually watching this video at the moment or a recording, even a false camera being put up. Would it, it does deter. Um up there as well, as a lot of people know, there's a book bank. And quite often that book bank gets raided and they chuck the books all over the place. It's just wanton vandalism. Um if we can identify some of them or the police can have words with them, um it might stop that. I've been up a couple of times to replace books up there. Um councillor Middleton, councillor, Vicky and Shaun have replaced them, various other members of the public have replaced books. Um, put a lock on the book box, that's going against um the principle of it, because anybody can go up there and um get the books out. But they're getting vandalised as well. Yes, John?
I'm not sure if it would be possible, because the books might obviously cover it, but do you think putting a camera maybe inside the box might help?
Uh, that, it was probably getting ripped, ripped out, it would get destroyed. It has, it would have to be something high up.
Yeah.
I mean, the the cameras up here in the building, there's one up there in the corner, um if it was down on the wall, somebody could just rip it, rip it to bits.
They are quite no answer, they're a lot of room, no, they're.
Uh. I believe that, yeah, people have been asked, uh with respect, anybody that's got a camera up there, it's usually for their own um. Viewing of the cars and things like that, um and people, even if they've been asked by the police, they're reluctant to pass that footage on. I can understand it to a certain extent.
I don't think, yeah, I'm sorry. I I'm against vandalism, but does the cost of CCTV outweigh the cost of the benches to replace the benches?
It's crowdfunding, the public have requested that they would crowdfund, can we have the council look into it to get it there?
Right.
Uh again, I don't, first, I think a lot of people are thinking, well, solar panel, that.
Twelve months, something like that, or what, installation, someone's going to have to have the upkeep of that.
Yeah.
CCTV, or is that going to cost more money than replacing the benches?
There's something. Don't get me looking to it in a way, what I will say is that they won't win, I'll just keep going by the box, I'll just keep going, making it that much.
Yeah, just keep doing it.
Yeah, but modern, modern CCTV systems have have come down massively, and so they, and also the technology is is evolved. So they can actually put speakers on them to tell people to to leave and they'll they'll be uh triggered by AI or sensors, you know, passive infrared sensors. So they they they're much better than the doorbells and they've got a higher frame rate of setup.
Okay, thanks. Okay, right, we're going to move progress on that. Um item fourteen um is the fishing working group. Um to consider and approve an action plan recommended by the fishing working group. Um councillor Whitehead was um going to be leading this, but um Rob's going to lead on this one, so I'll just pass it over to you, Rob, okay?
It's to establish a working group, we fishermen, council staff and the councillors to try and make the park, water lake park, a lot better. So the fishing sorted out and also make the ponds and the streams work as they should be working, so it's like a joint habit between us all. So we're looking for a proposal for this group.
Oh, sorry.
For this working group.
I'll propose. I have to, I have to.
Sort of water park, yeah, and it's meant to work with the fishermen.
Okay, yeah, you want to be up there, yeah, yeah, I know.
We got it. Yeah, the proposal, yeah, proposal. Seconded, all in favour? Anybody against? No. Um I will, I will just put a little bit extra in regarding this. Um the group has met, obviously, um and it was supposed to legitimize it. But they have put some proposals together, just to let you know, uh the removal and resolution of the surface scum in the main lake. Uh members of the group are planning for to do that. Clear uh clear and clean the weeds and branches around about the pegs, the fishing pegs. Uh recommend um dedicated disabled spots for disabled fishers. Um void pegs where public foot, what footpaths are and where they're narrow, okay? So they're going to be voiding those, repaint and renumber the pegs. Um the bridge outlet, if anybody knows down at the water park, between the two ponds or two lakes, um there's a bridge there. To remove all the surface scum, clean that out and unblock it, so that we get a natural flow of water from the the higher lake down into the lower lake. Which will help with um oxygenation. Um the streams from Valehead inlet to the large lake, we're going to cut back the bulrushes, the weeds and clean that all out. We're looking at adding more pegs um on the old beach, the old small beach that's been built in, they're going to put in some more fishing pegs there. Um examine addition, uh additions to aeration after clean up. Um update the signage and remove old signage so that the fishers know the the clear and defined rules for fishing. Trees that have been cut down and have fallen into the main lake, they need removing, so they're going to do that. Um there'll be no fishing from the main beach around um area around it. But there will be round about the second beach. Um the fishing areas need to be made prominent, i.e. there'll be no fishing here, there, wherever. Um where the 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 paths narrow, there'll be no fishing there, so signs will be put up. Uh and they're going to be working alongside members of the water park staff um to implement these, okay? But a lot of it is going to be done by volunteers. Thank you, yes. Right, item fifteen, Remembrance Day, this is to consider um a venue for refreshments uh down at um Kingsley. After they've moved through Fitzwilliam down to Kingsley, um as to where they're going to be having the refreshments. Uh last year, um it was held at Liquid Spirit. Um but this year, the proposal is for the refreshments to be held at the Coronation Club, which everybody knows is the Ping, okay? Do the proposal for the Ping to have refreshments, or has anybody got any, anything to say on the subject?
I think, I think, to be honest with this, when the local councillor said to me, there's no match or no remembrance day. So there was something organised at the last minute, and the Ping stood in and said, no, you can come here.
Right.
So the year afterwards, as they were last year, they voted on it, and I think Jean got the casting board and said, no, we're back to Liquid Spirit, the Ping can have it next year, because because they stood in.
Right.
So I propose a bit to the Coronation Club.
Right, but all we need to do is ratify that. Um anyway, I believe, um I don't know all the details regarding the march, but I believe that. A march has been organised through Fitzwilliam down into Kingsley.
Yeah.
There's obviously the one here at Hemsworth, refreshments will be held here, uh in the Hemsworth one, but it's the Kingsley one, okay? So the proposal for to.
The Ping says, because you're putting wood on up there, can you put wood on for them down there as well?
Right, I don't see why not.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
The the biscuits and cups of tea.
Biscuits and cups of tea.
The rest in catering for around fifty. Biscuits and cups of tea, that's all.
What whatever's put on here, I'm quite sure that um it'll be matched, okay? Right, so have a proposal for that.
Okay, sorry, Coronation.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, sorry, do you want to say something?
The Liquid Spirit received in a region of four hundred to four hundred and fifty pound for refreshments on lots of biscuits and tea.
Well, I'll have to look into that, because I can't remember um the donation um being given to them.
It it wasn't in the accounts then, wasn't shown in the accounts.
Was that, I wonder if that was a private thing, maybe from somebody?
Well, I don't know.
We'll we'll look in, we'll look into that and we'll get back to you, we got it, can we, can we check up on that, on the the minutes, please? Um and the accounts, obviously.
The Ping weren't giving up, and they stepped in, stood in the first time.
Right. But as is proposed, um whatever is put on here, um sandwiches, biscuits, whatever it is, tea, coffee, um that will be at least matched, okay? Proposal, uh Kevin, seconded. And what, everybody voting for, any voting for?
Pink.
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 Right, everybody keep your hands up, please, so Andrew can get things down. Okay, um anybody against? Abstentions? Rob? Right. Right, at this point, um item sixteen, I'd like to welcome the three new councillors. Um Shaun Middleton, who unfortunately missed the the first meeting after the election. Um no, you 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 came on uh before the election, sorry.
Yeah.
Um but I'd like to formally welcome him to the council. Um Ernie Bacon, I'd like to formally welcome you to the council. And Vicky Middleton, I'd like to formally welcome you to council. Any one of the three of you want to to say anything regarding it, the election or anything? No? No, right, okay then. Right, that concludes that business. Um public questions? Okay. Becca?
No, I'm just, I'm wondering, like, why can we not start the parade at Kingsley, finish at Fitzwilliam, you're the town council building, and then both you and the town council building. And then you can.
Gosh, the ball, finish at eleven o'clock, so that's the march, no, no, they shouldn't do it, guys, yeah.
Well, yeah, but you're on a different route, aren't you, going down, and then finish at the centre and put a spread in it there, I mean.
So I know the one for Hemsworth is. The one at Hemsworth uses this uh.
This memorial, yeah.
Obviously, Kingsley's got, Kingsley's have got their own memorials.
There are two separate ones, and um and I think for years and years and years, it's been combined, the 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 tended always. Um to the best of my knowledge, we've only been on the council for just over a year, um that they start up at Fitzwilliam and work the way down the hill towards Kingsley. Um if in the future, um a proposal wants to be put in by councillors or a request from the public for to reverse that. At a future date, then that potentially can be done, but as for this year, um it will be starting at Fitzwilliam.
Obviously not this year, but I think it is something, if the town council are going to help planning these things, realistically, using your own building, then, I mean, this isn't tough.
Yeah.
So, you know.
One to work, one to run, the Fitzwilliam is uh belongs to Wakefield or to Hemsworth Town Council.
Fitzwilliam, um.
Kingsley belongs to Hemsworth.
Oh, right, you mean the memorials.
Yeah, I just say, the memorial is belonged to Hemsworth Town Council.
And the the Hemsworth one doesn't belong to us, it's.
Bridge League, you know, on Hemsworth.
Yeah, Bridge League, you know, this one, they do all the organising for that, yeah. Uh with respect, I don't think it makes any difference who owns the memorials, we all. Want to um honour the dead uh for the service that they've provided. Um I wouldn't like to get into an argument as to who owns what, where we're going to be doing this, where we're going to be doing that. Just want to try and come to an amicable decision as where we're doing these, okay? Any more questions? Kathy?
Thank you. First of all, can I just point something out to you, Ian?
Yes.
I don't think it's appropriate that you always, you always mention Vicky as Shaun's wife.
I know, I did.
You did.
Did I, did I?
Every time, every time you say, you say Shaun's wife, Vicky, Vicky's here as a councillor.
She is here as a councillor, and I will give her a personal apology if I offend her. Um.
Shaun, Vicky's husband.
Sorry.
Anything's going the way around, it should be Vicky's husband.
Yeah.
I I just find it a little bit disrespectful.
Right, well, I I was aware that I had actually referred to her as Shaun's wife. I will refer, I'm going to have to refer to her as Vicky, I'm going to have to refer to Shaun as Shaun, because I can't call him Mr and Mrs uh Middleton.
It shouldn't matter whether she's married to him, to the council.
It doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, she's a councillor, yeah, so Vicky, my apologies.
Uh and that leads on to my next question.
Hmm.
Uh I'm aware that there's been a official council chat site. Where, and it is an official councillor's website, uh channel. That members of the public have been discussed by councillors.
Certain councillors.
Yes, not all councillors, but certain councillors. Mostly people like myself that attend council meetings.
And me, Kathy, and me.
And ex-councillors have been in this chatroom. And we have been spoke about in not appropriate language. Can you confirm that you are aware of this? And all I will say is that if it's correct, that I am being discussed. Then I will be taking matters further, because as councillors, you are supposed to be respectful to your residents. And also, you shouldn't be discussing us like that. And you should be adhering to the Nolan principle. I've seen on social media where they're implying. I've seen on social media where they're implying that it's someone, an ex-councillor that has been derogatory towards members of the public and it isn't. It's people that you would actually expect to have to hold higher principles. And all I can say is that I'm very disappointed in all of you that has been in this chatroom and not called out people for how they've been speaking and behaving towards residents.
Well, we've.
Rob, yeah, Rob.
How long's that?
Henry, can I have the tension, please?
Can I just point out that I'm not on it? If you, you said all.
Sorry, no, sorry. Any people that were in.
I'm also not on it. I'm aware of it and I've seen some of the things that they've put and they've been vile. And they should hang their head in shame.
It's hard to surprise them, you know, the way you start.
I don't know.
Always been.
Stop, please.
Jerry, I can't.
No, you're not getting it, but.
I.
Probably was, I'm not saying all.
Can we have some, can we have some order, please, or I will close down the meeting? Can I, can I have some order, please? I'm gonna close down the meeting. Can I, can I have? Can I, can I, can I have some order, please, or I'll close this meeting there on? I'm asking you both to.
Stop swearing.
Yes, yeah.
The meetings that I've been going to.
Yes.
You, you go in and out in for sticking up for his hand, but then you're getting, you and your point in it is, and then you're wondering why you're getting retaliation from him.
Yeah, listen, I'm not going, the CCTV's don't.
That's some investigation, you know, it's some investigation.
Right.
Investigation, I hope it is.
I, I am closing the meeting. I'm sorry, I'm clo- I'm clo- uh, no, I'm not closing the meeting. I'm not closing the meeting. I am.
For what's right, for what's.
Not right for someone in a disabled man.
We're gonna have one more, one more question. Could we? Yeah, we're gonna have one more question. Julie?
Right, I want to just make, it's a very short statement. I'm fully aware of the HTC councillor chat. I'm fully aware of what's been said about members of the public parishioners' residents. Action is being taken against all of you that's been in it, that I can assure you. If anybody's in any doubt, you can send in to the clerk a subject to access to request the download of everything that's going on in the chat. That has been confirmed today, this afternoon, by the monitoring officer at Wakefield. It is a legal finding document and trust me, you better not have deleted anything that you have said in that chat.
I'm gonna, I'll answer at the end with the last question.
Then going on seems to.
If I'm saying it's not, there's, I was busy. Where your councils can't help showing these things, don't show each other respect, so you're never gonna show the public respect. And there's no, the council don't look inward and say, how can we improve our bit? So that the gallery can improve their bit. It's like a free fall.
Behind the door.
Exactly.
That's my point, the council is.
I'm gonna, I'm clo- I'm closing the meetings, sorry. Meetings close at eight thirteen.
Well.
You've not been in full chapter either.